When we're ready. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. So, Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Ray.
I gotta call the meeting to order, I'm sorry. I call to order the meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District Board of Education. Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Ray.
Here.
Ms. Bush.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Dan, did you hear that?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Ms. Brady.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
All right, we are in order. I believe, Molly, you have a quick announcement to make before we get started into our topic of school reopening. So, do you wanna make your announcement?
Thank you, Jody. I just want to give everybody a heads up that I will have to leave this meeting abruptly because I am representing the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District at the Ohio School Boards Association delegate meeting, which is happening at the same time, and I wanna make sure that I am on that meeting in order to vote for us when that vote comes up. So, I will just disappear probably in about forty-five minutes or an hour.
Do you wanna announce why it's so important to vote for us?
Ah, yes. The Ohio School Boards Association has added planks to their platform this year, which we, as a district, proposed involving asking for charter schools and non-public schools accepting Ed Choice vouchers to be accountable in the same way as public schools are for both financial and testing requirements of the state. So, if you're going to take public money for your private education, you need to be held to the same rules as public schools who take public money for public education. And I want very much to vote for us to get those planks onto the platform.
All right, thank you. So, the next item on our agenda is the school reopening plan, and I'm gonna turn it over to our superintendent, Liz Kirby.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I know that Caitlin is going to load our presentation for tonight. And I will be talking through a couple of items just to keep us updated on where we are with our plan. So, Caitlin, if you would load it. Okay, thanks. All right, so for tonight, we have three objectives that we want to accomplish by the end of the evening. The first is, we're gonna share updated information on the Ohio Public Health Advisory System and also talk about the trends in Cuyahoga County. Secondly, we're gonna share some data that we collected from our reopening committees in terms of their recommendations. And then the third is, I wanna provide my recommendation to the board on the instructional model for the second quarter. This was a decision that we wanted to revisit today, if you all remember the vote that we had on this. And so, I wanna start with the current health advisory county risk level. I'm trying to think of a word that captures the experience of monitoring of these levels. I think ever-changing and fluid are probably the first ones that come to mind. So, today it was announced that we are at a red level and actually an improved red level from last week. If you recall, we had been in red for the past two weeks, and the red level that we were designated last week was trending towards purple. So, I was quite surprised, as many people were surprised, when the level did not trend to purple, but it remained red and actually was an improvement. This was, you know, we're certainly glad that our county is not at purple because that is at the highest risk level. But what I think it shows is how difficult it is to really to predict where these numbers would go. Because even in conversation with, you know, health officials, there was kind of an assumption that things would kind of continue to get worse. So, we were glad to see that these numbers did improve. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the indicators at the next slide. So, this is just the opening slide here. So, I wanted to just make sure that board members and members of our community had, you know, some information at their fingertips as relates to what these alert indicators are and also where we are in the county. So, the first thing I wanna do is to look at the link at the top of this slide, which is titled Summary of Alert Indicators, Ohio Department of Health. So, if you go there, you will see the seven indicators that the state uses when they assign a level and a color classification to a county. So, they look at new cases per capita, they look at a sustained increase in new cases, they look at the proportion of cases that are not in a congregate setting, that would be, you know, like a nursing home, for example. They look for a sustained increase in emergency department visits for COVID-like illness. They look for a sustained increase in outpatient visits for COVID-like illness. They look for a sustained increase in new COVID hospital admissions. And then the seventh indicator is ICU bed occupancy. Based on where a county is in terms of the number of indicators that they are at, that is how they assign the levels for that particular county. So, in order to be considered Level Four, you have to hit six of those seven indicators for two consecutive weeks. For Level Three, four of those five indicators have to be met. Level Two, it is two to three of those indicators met. And for Level One, zero to one of those indicators met. And I know we've looked at this colored chart before, but I just wanted to to kinda talk about that against the summary of the alert indicators. The next link gives us some trend data for the county. So, if we go to the Cuyahoga County Indicator Tracker, and we'll kinda go from, ooh, let me make sure I can see that. So, you will note that beginning on July 3rd, if we go all the way back to July 3rd, July 3rd, the county was classified as red, the 10th, the 17th, the 24th, classified as red. And then July 31st, we start to identify which metrics were met and were not met. So, you'll see July 31st, this kinda coincides with our planning and our decision to start remote. You'll see that we have three of the indicators met, and we're in Level Three. By August 7th, it's two of those indicators that were met, which keeps us, actually, by Level Three, it probably should be a higher level there. When we go to August 14th, you'll see that we have Level Three, three indicators met, that's the Indicator One, Indicator Three, and Indicator Five. The week of August 21st, which is when teachers started to return back again, we get three indicators met. In August 28th, we get two indicators met, September 4th, two indicators met, September 11th, two indicators met, September 18th, two indicators met, September 25th, two indicators met, September, October 2nd, three indicators met, October 9th, three indicators met, October 16th, five indicators met, October 23rd, six indicators met, and where we currently are, we are at four indicators met. So, that just shows you how we've been, we started out red in the state, then we had a sustained amount of time when we were in orange, we bounced back to red, the red level got a little bit worse, and then today it got a little bit better. And I just think it's important to know that because all the districts across our state and across our county are making decisions. You know, most people have aligned their decisions to these indicators to a certain extent, and we're on this train of trying to figure out exactly, you know, where we're going, where we're going to land. So, then the next slide gives us, I just wanted to point out some considerations. So, again, this week, our numbers did improve. We met four of the seven indicators today as opposed to six of the seven indicators last week. And so, as you guys, and I know people have heard this in the news, we were headed towards a purple designation. And again, just to underscore what I just shared in that tracker, last summer, Cuyahoga County remained at an orange level for the first eight weeks of school. You know, if we start with that week of the 21st, when we started to have staff return. And so, these are our risk level recommendations for quarter two. This has remained the same. We continue to recommend that when we are at Level One, we have a model of all kids back. At Level Two, we have a model of some form of blended learning. At Level Three and Level Four, remote learning for students, with the exception of small groups instruction. And so, you know, we have implemented our, the teachers are working with the students that are in the MD and AU classes, providing them supports aligned to their needs. So, wanted to just kinda broaden this out a little bit and give you some area context. We did meet with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health, and they talked about, you know, the small group instruction model for special education students that we had, and we discussed how it was aligned with their recommendations. And also, as I've shared before, I am in constant conversation with area districts in terms of how they are responding to these changing levels that we're getting from the Ohio Public Health Advisory System. It is quite varied. I'll talk about the First Ring next, but it's varied all across Northeast Ohio. Some districts are remaining with in-person learning, some districts are remaining hybrid, some districts are remaining remote, some districts still have not decided. And a lot of that is because, you know, there's just not a lot of certainty, you know, still at this point. And I'll tell you, I think that the fact that, and I've heard this from superintendent after superintendent, the fact that we started red and had that seven to eight weeks of orange, a lot of people felt like it was a missed opportunity to bring, you know, students back into the building, which is a priority not only for our district, but other districts too, to bring kids safely back. And when we saw the numbers actually start to decrease, I think districts really felt like they wanted to be a little more, you know, even more deliberate in making the decisions for the second quarter. So, to that point, let's talk a little bit about First Ring. So, here, I talk in terms of numbers of districts as opposed to the actual districts. And the reason that I'm doing that is because there's some, districts are still in the space of making decisions right now. I know, for example, that the fact that we have this announcement today is gonna impact some decisions that districts are considering. But I do wanna give both board members and our broader community a sense of where the First Ring is in terms of these decisions. And Caitlin, you don't need to click on the First Ring, but just for the information of those who are not aware, the First Ring districts are those districts that surround Cleveland essentially, and there are seventeen districts in the First Ring. We are one of those seventeen. So, of the districts in the First Ring right now, seven are incorporating remote learning in red. That's Level Three. Six of those districts are incorporating a hybrid learning structure in red. Three of those districts have not officially announced their plans, so they're still making a decision in terms of what they wanna do for the rest of the semester. And one has made a decision, really I have two here, but I just confirmed with the superintendent because this is fluid. You know, they have a special board meeting tomorrow, so this may change. But one of the districts has publicly announced that they are remaining out for the quarter, that's Maple Heights. Cleveland Metropolitan School District is going to be out until at least December 21st, so they have also made that public. And that is a district also in the First Ring. But right now, we're remote, so currently, as we are with remote, I just wanna make sure that this is clear. Right now, we're red, seven of the First Ring districts are currently red. Right now, we're red, but six of the First Ring districts are currently remote. People have not decided, with the exception of Maple Heights and Cleveland Heights, have not officially decided, according to, you know, my research from today, of what they're gonna do for the rest of the semester. So, people really are, I'm still kind of in that decision-making phase. And again, it's a fluid situation, I certainly understand, and I know that, you know, districts are different, and they have different things that they're paying attention to. But most of the districts in the First Ring are really, really focused on the Cuyahoga County Ohio Public Health numbers. So, let me now talk through our recommendations, and I'm gonna ask Felicia Gould, our Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services, to walk us through feedback on some key questions from different stakeholders in the district.
Thank you, Superintendent Kirby. Can everyone hear me? Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to walk through surveys that were taken with our reopening, our Superintendent Advisory Committee, as well as our PTA Council. I wanted to share this evening a slide that, so everyone would know who are participants on the reopening committees. The first names that you're seeing here on the slide are from the Elementary Reopening Committee members, and they, the team is comprised of both certificated and classified members, as well as board and other supervisors and building leaders. Next slide. The second slide is for the secondary team, because when we meet, we meet as an elementary group, and then we meet also as a secondary group to make sure that we are addressing the needs that happen at the different levels. So, the committee survey that I'm sharing here with you tonight was taken prior to any announcement that Governor DeWine shared today. So, these recommendations or survey results happened prior to today. We had a total of fifty-five responses, and you can see the categories of where our committee members are falling. Forty-three percent of them from administrators, ten point nine percent from the classified staff, which would include our administrative confidential assistants, paraprofessionals, child nutrition custodial, and forty-three point six are from our certificated staff, which include our counselors, teachers, nurses, psychologists, social workers. So, the first question that was posed to the committee was, based on our current risk level in Cuyahoga County, what would be the recommendation for the second quarter? As you can see, we have fifty-five responses, and seventy-eight point two percent said that we should remain remote for the whole quarter. There were a few remained remote until the week of November 16th, which was the recommendation from our last board meeting. And you can see some, a small amount there for move to hybrid and a small amount to move to in-person. Our second question, based on a proposed timeline that was shared at the meeting, discusses when should the reopening committee reconvene to look at current risk levels. There was a look, a timeline that talks about Week Fifteen, which would be at December 7th, and Week Seventeen, and this was if we were in a remote setting for the entire quarter. That was what the question was based on. Ninety-four point five percent agreed that the timeline was feasible. Next question talks about, parents have been inquiring about opportunities for students to connect with their peers. And we asked the committee, should they consider small group sessions in the red level for students who require both social and emotional support? Here, we have thirty-eight point two percent saying yes, thirty-four point five percent saying maybe, and twenty-seven point three percent stating that no, we should not have any small group sessions. So, a question to the team also was posed, if we did do small groups for socially-emotional support, what could that look like? So, there were members that shared ideas around what in-person should look like. There were members that shared what virtual should look like, and then there were some suggestions that also came from this question. Based on the suggestions, they felt that we should ask for volunteers for people to do the support. Many discussed that if we were in the red and that we should just remain remote. And then also, make sure that we ask students what they would like to see as far as social-emotional support. So, some of the in-person support were small groups that definitely practiced all of the COVID protocols with their age-appropriate peers, looking at targeting kids with literacy, some group check-ins, some small group work around the arts or specials, small group social circles or lunch bunches facilitated by counselors and social workers, and some extracurricular activities that could occur outside of the school day. With virtual support, a lot was discussed around counseling sessions, which a lot of those take place, some one-on-one meetings with teachers, interaction definitely with peers that are beyond what they do during the school day, some things where they can just have some time to just talk and kinda decompress what's going on, and some positive self-talks or even some presentations. The next question was around, next slide, Caitlin. The next question was around in-person small groups in the red level for students who are struggling and not experiencing success in the remote learning. Forty-five point five percent of the reopening committee responded yes out of the fifty-five responses. Thirty-six point four, maybe, and eighteen point two was responded no. Here are some suggestions that the group talked about for in-person support. Again, looking at small groups, but definitely practicing the protocols to do that. Look at support using our ALC, paraprofessionals and teachers, and intervention specialists for those struggling students. Just a few days a week with specific criteria about what that would look like. Small groups, again, with our counselors and social workers. A recommendation for a drop-in center where parents could actually sign up for days for support. And then also to utilize asynchronous days at the high school for students and replicate and extend right at schools. Some of the virtual support were to rethink the intervention enrichment time during remote learning and target students that could be supported during that time. Actually, to utilize what I would call the remote days and times with students, which we call asynchronous. Some of the support groups, help sessions, and some tutoring after hours. Again, suggestions were to take volunteers, remain remote because of the hazards, continue to do our small groups that we're doing currently with our students with disability. Think about our EL students as part of that small group, and that's our English learners, doing a support group with them. Parent support sessions facilitated by our family engagement specialists and social workers to help parents with how to help their students at home. And then also for the district to think about, if there was small group, that we provide some type of transportation to ensure our students could get to the sites. The next question was around, should we provide small groups for our students that are excelling and could use additional enrichment? Twenty-three point six percent said yes, twenty percent said maybe, and fifty-six point four percent said no, based out of the fifty-five responses. And some of the in-person support was around using our gifted intervention specialists, looking at group projects and presentations, project-based learning with small and diverse cohorts. Definitely our enrichment activities that were social in nature, where kids could actually go outside and experience things in small group, and they could also extend activities. A lot of the virtual support pieces already occur within our current remote learning schedules. And again, the suggestions are to take volunteers and to remain in remote due to the current health concerns around our levels. The next one was to provide support for students in need of college and career support. Of the fifty-five responses, forty percent maybe, thirty point nine percent yes, and twenty-nine point one percent no. In-person support here, definitely small groups practicing the COVID guidelines, small meetings with counselors. Again, the drop-in center was a recommendation here, college prep meetings, one-on-one meetings with school support and staff to assist with the post-secondary action planning, people such as our counselors, CTE, Avid, et cetera. Virtual support groups, college and career sessions, they are currently occurring now by our school counselors at the high school. Again, the suggestions, ask for volunteers and remain remote. And our last question for the planning committee was, what is the recommendation of the committee if the advisory level changes to the purple level? Moving to Level Four, out of the fifty-five responses, sixty-nine point one percent remain remote and discontinue small group and in-person instruction. Twenty-one point eight percent remain remote and continue small group instruction. And then there was some small factors for others, like moving to hybrid and move to in-person. We asked the same survey to our PTA Council for the second quarter. And our PTA Council, we had seventeen members there, eighty-two point four percent voted to remain remote for the whole quarter. Seventeen point six percent said to move to hybrid, and there were no other ones about remaining for the week of the 16th or move to in-person. We asked again in regards to the timeline about the committee looking at looking at our risk levels at Week Fifteen and also Week Seventeen, which would be the week of January 4th. Seventeen responses, ninety-four point one percent said yes, that they were fine with the timeline, and looking at those risk levels during Quarter Three. And again, this was in response to if we were looking at staying out for the entire quarter. For the PTA Council, we asked the committee if we were to change our levels to purple. If we were to move to purple, forty-seven point one percent remain remote and discontinue small group in-person instruction. Forty-one point two percent remain remote and continue small group in-person instruction as we're doing currently. And then there were some outliers in remain remote and consider in-person on a case-by-case basis, as well as remain remote and continue small group in-person instruction for certain students.
Felicia, could you walk through these next two slides as well?
Sure, sure. And so, for our draft planning phase, we shared kind of where we were last time. We were in Week Eight. We had our last, our first October reopening meeting occurred October 5th through the 9th. We then met again in Week Eight. During that time, when we met in Week Five through Nine, of course, we were in orange, the orange then turning to red, and then now we're in what I would just say, a higher red level. And so, now we're in Week Nine. And we have parent-teacher conferences this week. Tomorrow, we have Professional Development Day and Records Day, and we also end Quarter One. So, November 2nd, which is Monday, begins Quarter Two. The week of, that week will have Election Day and a Professional Development Day, which is on November 3rd. The boards will have a board meeting in Week Eleven. We then have high school parent and middle school conferences that week. And based on the board's last recommendation, we were to look at a decision for the Week Twelve, which is November 16th through the 20th.
Thank you. But the first statement I wanna share with the board is that up until today's announcement, my plan was to recommend that we stay remote for the remainder of the quarter. I anticipated that we would be at purple. I anticipated that those indicators would be worsening. And that was also the information that, as we surveyed the different committees and discussed this, you know, we were all under that impression. Today's announcement, given that not only did we remain red, but Today's announcement, given that not only did we remain red, but we improved in some indicators, did bring me great pause. And so due to that, I have made some adjustments to my recommendation and I'll walk through each of these points and I'll also walk through my rationale. I recommend that we push back the potential start date for hybrid learning to November thirtieth, twenty twenty. So that is the week after Thanksgiving, giving. Just as a reminder, during our previous board member, we had decided that we would push back the start to no sooner than November sixteenth. And so again, I'm recommending that we push that back to no sooner than November thirtieth. That doesn't mean that it would definitely start November thirtieth, but we would not, we would continue with our, with our models, our current remote model until at least November thirtieth. Secondly, we will continue to monitor the county level data next week and we will resurvey the district, the district committees on our recommendations. We want to share the new information. We'll again, look at the trends to see if there's anything that's different in their, in their recommendations. It'll be very interesting to see what the, what the levels look like next week. I'd like for us to revisit the decision and share recommendations for the rest of quarter two at the November tenth board meeting that is coming up after next week. And then just to reiterate, my recommendation is that at level four, all of our students learn remotely, so we would not have any of our students receiving any in-person instruction at level four, which is the purple level. So what's the rationale behind my recommendation? One, I think because we bounced back up this week, we want to see more trend data. The data today were a surprise. We want to hear committee feedback based on the new trend data. And again, when we polled them, we were trending towards purple. And then connected to this, and, and I think this is why so many other districts are really trying to be careful in their decision-making here. We started the twenty-twenty-one school year in red. And then we had eight weeks at level. I'm sorry, that should be level two, not level three, so eight weeks in the orange. And so, you know, again, we really want to see, is our trend really taking us through a consistent red for the rest of the semester? I think by the time we get to, to next week, we should have much better information around that. The next slide here, and I'm, I'm going to ask Dr. Lombardo just to talk through where we are in terms of our COVID nineteen dashboard, in terms of where we are with our numbers. If you all recall, this is a requirement that we report this information. We, we have developed and will post our own dashboard, just so everyone in the community can see what our current numbers are. So Dr. Lombardo, if you could just walk us through where we are currently with our COVID nineteen cases.
Yes, good evening, everyone. You'll see that up to date, we have two staff cases and one student case. Each week, we do, I do need to report by Monday by noon, all the new cases that come up in the building. Being that we have been remote and we have limited people in the buildings, I'm happy to report, we've only had three cases at this point.
And one thing I would point out is that, you know, the, the reported student case of this data is a student that is, you know, learning remotely. We do have to report all cases that we receive, which is why you see that indicated there. So my final slide before our discussion is just in terms of the suggested next steps. One, our committees continue to plan in preparation for any changes to the instructional model. So we have our secondary, our elementary, our middle school committees that are planning for the hybrid model when we are set to, set to return. We will continue to monitor the COVID nineteen levels and continue to confer with the Board of Health. We will meet again on November tenth. And tonight, I think we'll, the board will make a decision on how they want to proceed then. And then as a district, we will continue to monitor attendance grades and performance on assessments. Our, our next work session, we're going to be taking a deep dive into quarter one. And what kind of trends we're seeing with attendance? What type of trends we're seeing with grades? And what type of information we have on assessment performance? And as we get that data, we will be working with our administrators, our teacher teams and our parents to ensure that all of our models support student success. I know that Mrs. Gould shared some feedback on small group instructional models. I do want people to know that we have quite a few teachers that are supporting students and doing some in-person support for students as needed. So we already have, you know, that volunteer component. We already have some elements of that happening as, as we see needs for students. Quite a few virtual supports for sure, that students are getting one-on-one sessions, tutorial sessions with, with teachers and other staff as well. So by our next work session, we should have a sense of where we are and any type of adjustments that we need to make. So that is the conclusion of our recommendations for this evening. And now I will pause myself and open it up to our board members for questions and discussion.
Thank you. I guess what a happy surprise that things are better than, than what we originally feared they were going to be, so. I, I'm, I'm pleased that our numbers are better. I mean, I'm hoping that this means that people took the threat of going to purple seriously and started doing the things that they needed to be doing, you know? Maintaining social distance, wearing their masks, washing their hands, doing all the things that, you know, Governor Dewine keeps telling us to do to drive our numbers down. I, I am hesitant to make a call on the entire quarter right now. I'm, I don't want to get in the same situation that we had where we made a call and then the numbers improved to the point that we went to orange and we were still remote. So I, I'm supportive of the idea of pushing back the decision. Other board members?
I'd like to comment on the, is it getting better? Or staying the same? I mean, the, the number in this dashboard, I'm looking from the state, really is the, I mean, the most, I know there's a lot of indicators in the, the, the component that makes it red or purple. But the cases pretty much through the summer when we were orange, we were, I don't know, ninety-three cases per one hundred thousand or seventy-six. There was a point where it got to fifty-nine cases per hundred thousand. But we're up to a hundred and thirty-seven and it's even greater than the one hundred and one that we had last week. So, I mean, the case count continues to go up. Which is the one thing that, you know, worries me the most. And I know we have to balance that with, you know, what, what Liz initially said. You know, it is our priority to go back. I mean, you know, teaching in front of kids is what we do. We have to keep it safe, obviously. So it's the number of cases that I really look at. And, and, and in this sense, Jody, I agree with you. We, we do need to look at, I think waiting another week or two to really get a better sense of this. I mean, everybody was absolutely sure, all the inside information we had from the county was it's going purple, prepare for that. So I do think we were blindsided today with this. But be as it may, I mean, but, but the case count still is higher this week than it was last week, even though that, that we remain in red. I think the survey data was, was helpful. I think it needs to be stated, I mean, what was worrying me a little bit about the first set of the reopening committee was very light on parent feedback. The PTA, I, I don't know, I don't know exactly the number. I think there were seventeen people in the PTA that were part of the group. I don't know how many of them were teachers. If, you know, when I was head of the PTAs, we had maybe one teacher that was part of the PTA. So I mean, it's very, very heavy balanced on parents. And I'm pretty sure it's the same way as it is now. That information was telling. I mean, you know, that, that group of involved parents is essentially saying to stay remote, but they were saying that with the expectation that we were going purple this week. So, you know, Liz, what I would suggest is, can you go back to this group now that we're not? And get additional feedback in time for our meeting next week, which is where I think we really need to look at in order to, you know, come up with a fair decision. I'm very anxious about the work session. I really want to see, I mean, you, you might recall last week, I called for a set of benchmarks. And we did get some pushback on that and I responded to, there was an open letter that the union wrote to me that was, you know, publicly announced and I responded to that. I mean, we as a board, it's, it's our job to evaluate benchmarks, okay? You know, I get the fact that we're under, well, I should say, we have to evaluate realistic benchmarks. And I think, you know, we need to find these realistic benchmarks to see how our students are doing and how our staff is doing. And asking these questions as a board member is completely appropriate. And we need to continue to, to dig into the numbers and get the data and better understand before we make this decision. We have a lot of people that approach us with New York Times articles and articles from how to state. You know, this pandemic is affecting states differently. We obviously see it's affecting counties differently. So I think we really need to look at how we are in northeastern Ohio when we make these decisions and whether we think it's safe or not. You know, people are going to tell you it's safer in New York City right now than it is in downtown Cleveland or in Cleveland Heights. Because they have a better handle on things than, than we do and their case counts are lower. So I think this is the kind of stuff that we need to evaluate and manage. I'm especially interested in data from the county, our county Board of Health on the transmission of COVID in the classroom. We are hearing more and more that it's insignificant. But I'd like to have the people from the county that have the data actually tell us that, if it, if that indeed is correct. And I think with that information, that would weigh pretty heavily on a decision that we might need to make. I keep on saying next week, I don't think it's next week, it's, it's the tenth, so it's two weeks from, from, from that. Okay, that's all I have to say. Good, good presentation, thanks for sharing this with us.
Yeah, my, my only other comment is, I, I'm supportive of pushing back until at least the thirtieth, because when I look at the calendar, we already said we weren't going to start till the sixteenth. If we did do, do a hybrid. That leaves essentially one week of hybrid, then the next week is Thanksgiving. So that would mean the kids coming in hybrid would have, you know, if it's the beginning of the alphabet, A through K or whatever, they would be in person, the sixteenth and the seventeenth, and then the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth. And the kids who have the back, or the back half of the alphabet would be in the nineteenth and the twentieth, but then they wouldn't be in for Thanksgiving because the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh, you know, we're, we're off school. So to me, it just makes sense to, you know, let's wait, kind of see what's going on. I think that it's a little, I mean, the situation's been fluid for a while, but this was really fluid, so. That's why I, I would agree pushing back to the thirtieth, because I just don't see, you know, disrupting the routine kids have right now for one week and then the next week being the holiday, which is going to disrupt it anyways. That, that's one, another reason why I'm very supportive of just pushing the decision back to the thirtieth.
Yeah, I'm in agreement to pushing it back to the thirtieth as well, but I, I also want to know about the, the right at school, the right at school extension. Is that also going to be, I mean, is that going to be, that program is going to be extended to the thirtieth, through the thirtieth?
Yes, we would extend that program through the thirtieth. The caveat would be if we go into purple, then we would want that program also to pause. And so we'll need to do some planning with the coordinators there on that. But just given the seriousness of the purple level, we certainly wouldn't want, you know, if we don't want, if we don't have students in any of our buildings, you know, for any in-person academic services, that would also extend to right at school. So that is a discussion that we'll have with them, but that would be my recommendation for that. But to your question, and I know you didn't ask that Beverly, so I'm just extending it. But to your question, yes, we would continue it through November thirtieth, yes.
And how, how, how well used are they, is right at school being? Is that program being used?
It's about fifty students, so they still have space. And there are also scholarships and support that are being offered to those families who are in need of that support through the Heights Schools Foundation.
So I've got a slightly different perspective on this. And so I'm, I'm really glad to have an opportunity to just talk it through. I really think more and more that we would be wise to consider more thoroughly just calling off the rest of the quarter. And instead of planning to come back on January eighteenth or thereabouts. And there's a few reasons that I have for that. The first is, you know, I think that we've, we've done a lot of, of hurry up and wait. And that, I think that that has been really taxing on our community and our families. The, the lack of surety that, that our families need. And, you know, and it's, it certainly is justified. It's hard, it's hard to plan when you don't know what's, what's going to be happening for more than a couple of weeks. I also think that, and I've, I've, I've shared this with people previously that, you know, I, I have real misgivings about our hybrid plan. The, the idea of basically simulcasting lessons that are occurring live to our students who are on their, the off day, I think is a really pedagogically questionable plan. And so I would really like for us to spend some more time thinking differently about what a return to school might look like in terms of the instructional model. I also think that we need, I, I would like to, to know more really about what our families are experiencing in terms of the successes and failures of what we've, what we've been doing. And I think that the dive work and the deep dive we're going to get next week is likely to bring perhaps some of that information to us. But, you know, the big one for me is just, you know, I think that there might be some, some leverage that we could get by just saying, you know what, we're going to come back in January. The plan is to come back in, you know, in January. And, and then we have a bigger chunk of time that we could use to really put together a top-notch return to school program. So those are just some of my thoughts. I certainly will support the, you know, whatever decision is made, but I think we do need to consider the families and we've all had many families reach out to us talking about, among other things, just the, the constant uncertainty. So I, I'd just like to hear what others have to say about that.
I was waiting to see if Molly wanted to add anything. I'm not sure if she's still on yet. Check her, she had to drop.
No, she, she did drop, Jody.
Okay, she dropped, all right. Okay, so my comments would be in response to your question, Dan. You know, I, I hear from both sides of the coin. I hear from families who are, you know, absolutely, please stay remote. I'm concerned about that. I want to make it clear that we're not going to make anyone go. If somebody feels their best interest is to stay remote, they absolutely should stay remote and that would be for a variety of reasons that is, you know, personal and unique to their situation. I think that I also hear from a lot of families that this is really hard for them. I mean, I hear from people who tell me they go out to their car and they cry. I hear from people who, you know, their children are really struggling. You know, and I, I have, I hear from people who say, hey, remote is working fine for my child. I hear from other people that remote is not working for their child. And I hear from families where it's working for one child, but it's not working for the other. You know, so I don't want to underplay the fact that this is hard for everyone and there is a certain level of uncertainty that we are all living with, no matter what. Yeah, maybe one less thing that's uncertain would be better. But I, I don't know, I, But I don't know, I'm hesitant to call it for the whole quarter because of what happened in the summer. I mean, and yet I do know when I was on the president, the school board president's call this week, you know, first of all, we all thought it was going purple. No one thought that we would be in red today. But one of the schools where they are remote, the school board president said she had done a walk through the buildings and said, if you think that learning in hybrid is, she said, it's still different and it's not the same and it's stressful for the kids and it's challenging. And Dan, you probably know this far better than I do because you're living it every day. But it was interesting to hear that perspective of someone saying, you know, don't think that you're just going to put the kids back in school in a hybrid and it's going to feel like school, it's going to feel the same because it's not, you know, nothing feels like it did before March of last year or March of this year. Feels like a year, feels like 10 years right now.
I agree with you, Jody. I think that it is difficult. You know, we've talked back and forth a little bit about, you know, about that we made this decision and then things got better. I don't have any regrets personally about being remote. I don't want people to misunderstand, at least, you know, me on that. I'm very glad that we went remote. I think that the fact that we went remote is likely, you know, involved in those low numbers. At least I would like to think that. I can't prove it, but I believe it. You know, I also think unfortunately, you know, I'm a cynic and we have a major election coming next week and I just, I wish I was more confident about those numbers, that those numbers haven't been influenced by the, by next week's election. And so I also am just not sure how much new information we're really going to have next week. But my crystal ball hasn't worked for about four years. So there's that. Anyway, I did see that Bev had come on, Mike, I'd love to hear what she has to say.
Yeah, you know, because I've been getting different. Some families are struggling and some families are doing well. I just think, and personally, I mean, I kind of agree with Dan to wait until January. But then the other party is you have to look at, you know, what, how our kids are struggling with dealing with this, you know, not being back in school. So, you know, it's, you go back and forth, this pandemic has just been a struggle for all of us. But I think for right now, I think we should look at probably till the 30th to see what's happening with the, you know, with our county and what's happening with the virus and how our numbers are going to go up and down or. But right now, I think we should sort of look at extending it to the 30th and see what happens.
Yeah, I think, yeah, Dan, I appreciate what you're saying. And I think we can't, I mean, I think we have to be very clear when we're making these decisions. I know a local school district shaker is giving their families two days' notice. I don't think that's good for families, frankly. I think we need to give our families a lot more notice. I know we get a lot of feedback from, I mean, people are very, very, you know, call it left or right, but we've got people on one end that are very, very concerned about going back and in absolutely no circumstances do they want to go back, teachers and families. And then on the other end, we have families that really, really expect us to go back. And, you know, we can't, and, you know, some days you get more emails from one group than the other. You know, this is not a popularity contest based on how many emails we get and count those and take up a vote. I mean, I think we really need to have some really good data that sort of backs up some of this and, you know, some of the things I'm looking for, I already mentioned, so I'm not going to bore you again and repeat that. But I do want to repeat one thing, and that is, I mean, the reason why I am walking in eggshells and trying to be extra cautious is the case count from last week in Cigga County, I don't have the exact math, but it's about 37% increase from last week. And, you know, Dan, you know, I'm not going to read anything into it and why we're red on a week that, you know, people have to go out and vote. And is it, you know, how bad it is or not how bad it is? I mean, that's a number, that's an actual number. It's, I mean, the case counts are going up and I'm concerned about that, which is sort of why I want to see all this other data, including, you know, how well are students working in the classroom? And I love the fact that we're giving our families options. I mean, and trying to do it so they're not being forced to go back and trying to call for volunteers for teachers because we have, I mean, I know a couple of our CTE teachers are showing up in the classroom because they know the only way that their kids are going to be able to pass a test is working hands-on. And that's, you know, kudos to these teachers, that's phenomenal. And, you know, I'm so proud of them and the kids that are going in because they know that they need this. And those are, I know there's lots of little examples through the districts, through our district that really, you know, demonstrate, you know, people stepping up. But when we have to make a big decision, I want to make sure we have more data before we can make it, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm concerned about the case count going up. I'm concerned frankly about all the holidays that are coming, just because I don't, I don't have confidence that people are going to continue doing the things that they need to do to be safe for the numbers to go down. But I was wrong with the summer. I thought for sure we were going purple and I thought for sure we would be purple this week. So that's why I'm a little hesitant to call it for long-term. I do know it's stressful for families to have this, like, are they going back, are they not? But if we're calling it now to, and not making, you know, we're saying not until at least November 30th, that's a month. And I think in a week or two, we'll have a better idea which way this is trending. Was this week just a weird blip? Is that case count higher, but some of those other things are lower? Are we actually going to have any, like, definitive data about whether or not spreads in schools? I mean, starting to look at more of that data that, you know, that schools are having to report now. I don't know, I don't know. The only other thing that I would like to say is I would really, really like to thank the vast majority of community members that I've heard from who have just said, I know this is hard and thank you for, you know, thank you, thank you to the board for your leadership during such a difficult time. I have heard that time and time and time again, almost everyone who reaches out to me, at least, you know, that's included somewhere in their note. And I just wanted to acknowledge that because it means a lot because this has been a tough, tough time to navigate through.
You're absolutely right, Jody. You know, and similarly, you know, we talk, we use the term teacher, I think generally very often to, as a way of recognizing the folks who are coming into work. But, you know, we also know that there's, you know, they're amazing paraprofessionals, I mean, which make up a big chunk of the folks who are coming into work every day and, you know, are really fantastic and, you know, inspirational figures, to be honest with you. So, you know, I will absolutely, as I said when I started, I will absolutely support a decision for us to follow this, to revisit it in a week and a half or so. I would make one request if I could for what is likely to be a very similar presentation in a week and a half. I would love to know if there, I don't know if there's a way of color coding it perhaps, Liz, but the members of the return to the planning committees, elementary and secondary, I would love to know sort of the who's who. There's a lot of names here that I should know and a lot of them I do, but I don't know where people fit. So could we have sort of teachers colored it in one and parents in another and? Yeah, I think that that would be really helpful for me at least. And some people will be, you know, they have dual roles. We have teacher parents, for instance.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, that would. Yeah, that'd be great. So do we need a resolution of some sort or what are we looking for?
Yeah, I need to make a motion. So I have some wording here that I wrote out while we were talking and feel free to edit or change it, but I was going to base it on the last one we did. So I was going to ask if we have a motion to start the second quarter remotely until at least November 30th for the majority of our students and continuing to offer in-person services for the MDAU students, for students with the option for the MDAU students to move to remote learning if their parents guardians choose. Any edits to that motion?
I would like to add just to that motion that if we are at the purple level, all students learn remotely. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Okay.
And Liz, further clarification, would that include Right at School?
I mean, well, technically they're not, Right at School is a childcare entity, so technically they're not our students. I'm not quite sure if I would include that in that, maybe we can revisit that November 10th.
Okay, maybe we'll get some clarification on what that.
From the legal language, I just want to make sure the language is correct, yeah.
Thank you, okay. So I would second that motion?
Okay, do I need to read it again or are you guys good with it as it was?
Could you read it again, Jody, I'm sorry?
Yeah, no, I'll read it again. And I just want to make sure I didn't have any other clarification. Oh, Liz, the only other clarification I wanted to check on, since we get the county levels on Thursday, if we went to purple, we would not go to remote on that Friday, we would wait till Monday, correct, to give families time to plan? If it was announced on a Thursday, it wouldn't be remote learning on Friday, it would wait till Monday, just like when the governor originally shut schools back in March.
But I can tell you that we don't have any students that are in person on Fridays. So we wouldn't necessarily have to worry about the planning perspective from, from the perspective of the family. So I don't necessarily think we need to include that language because we don't have anyone in on Fridays anyway.
Okay, I just wanted that point of clarification. All right, I'm going to read it again. Do I have a motion to start the second quarter remotely until at least November 30th for the majority of our students and continuing to offer in-person services for MDAU students with the option for MDAU students to move to remote learning if their parents or guardians choose? With an addition of if the county level changes to purple, all students would move to remote learning.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
All right. And I believe that is everything on our agenda for tonight. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Hines?
Yes, and I do just want to wish our cross-country runners who are racing in the regionals the best of luck this Saturday.
Absolutely. Mr. Reading?
Yes. Thank you, we are adjourned. Mr. Gainer, I will type up that resolution and give it to you so you have the language.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.